Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Dave, Alodion Morse's Pradium, Ante Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Counsel Court. Today is Class 109, Class 109. What did we learn in Class 108? Well, we're still reading over what's commonly known as the Declaration of Intervention that the United States of America and the United States Intergovernmental Organization wrote, right, in terms of trying to help to defend Ukraine's rights. Ukraine at the time, right, was being, had an active aggression against them by Russia, right, so Russia came in into Ukraine and now Ukraine is taking Russia to the International Court of Justice. And by Ukraine doing that, now you have approximately 41 other European states that decide to write a Declaration of Intervention that when they could intervene and create what's commonly known as a class action lawsuit against Russia, right? So that's what we've been going over, okay? But in the midst of reading over that Ukraine versus Russia status in terms of understanding why the United States of America and the United States Intergovernmental Organization wrote it, we're starting to learn how to apply, how can Moors understand how to write a Declaration of Intervention as well, right? What goes into it? And what we should start taking away from it is, when we write a Declaration of Intervention as ergo omnis parties, meaning as a class action lawsuit, what goes into a Declaration of Intervention is it simply that? How are you going to intervene? What laws are you going to invoke to say why you think a respondent state such as Russia was violating what particular law? Well, in this particular occasion, the United States of America and Ukraine was utilizing what? International law. Not their local constitution, but international law regarding what? The Convention on the Punishment and what?
Genocide.
Of genocide, right? So the provision and punishment on the crime of genocide of 1948, right? But also we're learning through the United States, they're using some other choice words. They defining what genocide's all about is genocide in whole or in part, right? And now they slowly but surely starting to define what is aggression. So in Class 108, we started defining the word aggression because the United Nations defined the word aggression. And lo and behold, we started reading over a resolution from the United Nations commonly called Resolution 3314. And Resolution 3314 is about the definition of aggression. And in reading over that, what we found is that the definition aggression also includes language regarding protections of the true inhabitants of the land who are trying to be at varying stages of advancement to get into statehood. So an act of aggression against the inhabitants, i.e. Moors, is considered to be outlawed, right? Whether in whole or in part. It's not justifiable if a colonial state is trying to infringe upon a inhabited state such as Moroccan states, provincial Moroccan states, are trying to be at varying stages of advancement to check the boxes of international law, to get into statehood, to be a self-governing state. If the United States of America or the United States Intergovernmental Organization or any of its 50 governors that are overseeing trust territories, commonly called the states of, right, which are actually charters, if they do anything to infringe against our rights and they use acts of aggression, well, what's an act of aggression? It's called use of force. Well, use of force is utilizing what? Arms. What type of arms do they have? Their police have arms, their sheriffs have arms, their bailiffs have arms, right? What other type of arm does the United States use in terms of what their courts? Where their judges, their magistrates have an arm. And what's their arm called? A gavel. Right, so their gavel that's in their hand is an extension of an arm. They're utilizing coercive measures, right? They're forcing collusion of parties to force Moors back into the jurisdiction of the United States or back into the jurisdiction of one of their charter states in dealing with their municipalities. And then municipalities have magistrates who're sitting there on the bench, right? Enforcing their municipal laws against Moroccan nationals, right? So that's also an act of aggression because that's an aggressive act by a magistrate using their gavel or it's an act of aggression by police or sheriffs utilizing their arms, their weapons to force Moors back into their jurisdiction. All these are acts of aggression, alright? Now, the Moroccan states have to start defining what is an act of aggression. We, within our states, also need to define, okay, what does aggression mean to us as Moors? We need to define that as our internal law. We need to define that as Moroccan law. What does aggression mean when it comes to dealing with a dispute with the United States of America, the United States Intergovernmental Organization, or any one of their 50 trust territories in dealing with their governors, mayors, magistrates, sheriff, police, prosecutors, etc., right? We have to start defining things on our behalf. We have to come up with Moroccan legislation or foreign policy that prohibits the Americans from infringing against our rights, right? They're trying to supervene the impossibility of performance of our Moroccan law and we need to have Moroccan law that states that, in writing, right? However, in the absence of Moroccan law, what can we depend on? We can always depend on international law. We can always invoke international law, right? Such as Resolution 3314, right, of the year 1774 that talks about the definition of aggression. We can invoke those eight articles, including the preamble, because the preamble is a part of that same contract, so never skip over the preamble, Moors. The preamble is the first page of the contract, right? That's what you must always understand, the preamble is just as important as the articles itself, okay? Now, what else did we learn in Class 108? Well, as we were taking a deeper dive in understanding the definition of aggression, we started understanding that the definition of aggression started to underscore and put highlights on other United Nations resolutions, right? Such as Resolution 2625 of the year 1970. We're going back in time now, right? So Resolution 3314 came out in 1774. But Resolution 3314, which is definition of aggression, started to talk about Resolution 2625 that came out in 1970. And Resolution 2625 is about what? Friendly relations among states. And what we started learning as we briefly read over the preamble, i.e. the annex, is that it also talked about what? Acts of aggression against the inhabitants, i.e. the Moors, while they're at their varying stages of advancement, right? We found out, especially when we started reading over the preamble, that it is outlawed, any type of aggression, any type of acts that would undermine the inhabitants, i.e. the Moors, from getting into statehood, right? This is all outlawed, alright? But also while we was going over Resolution 2625, UN, that the UN wrote, we understand now, you go back in correlation, going back in time, we also started understanding about what? United Nations Resolution 1514. United Nations Resolution 1514 from the year 1960, going back in time, talked about what? Decolonization. Right, so we read over the preamble with seven articles, right, that outlaw colonialism, right? So now we fast forward, we got the 1960 Resolution 1514, we got the 1970 Resolution 2625, and we got Resolution 3314 of 1974. And all these things work in harmony, they work in correlation, they work in parallel with each other to give Moors an opportunity to utilize international law as their defense. That is law. You see, Moors already have laws. All we have to do is depend on international law. That is the law that we stand on in the absence of us having our own internal Moroccan legislation. So all this time, the Moors have been saying enforce the Constitution and utilize the Red, due to Carter's Supreme Court, utilize all type of case laws of the state of Virginia, the state of California, the state of Texas, and the state of Philadelphia, and the state of South Carolina, and all that was a falsehood. That was miseducation. Why would you turn around and try to use the colonists' municipal laws as statutes when you should have been using international law as your defense, right? You see how we were miseducated? We delayed our own justice. And that's the truth, right? So this is what we learned in Class 108, as we started to read over all those resolutions that's been around since the 60s, really going back to the 40s. The Charter came out in the 40s, right? So from the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, the 70s, all these laws are in place to help the natural inhabitants of the land, i.e. to help Moor Rockings to decolonize, right? The law's already there, but we were trying to enforce the wrong law. Now let me explain something to the Moors. The Moors would say, well, Noah Dry Lee said, "Go to those who know law and they'll give you a favorable response. Go to those who know law at City Hall." Wait a minute, City Hall? Well, City Hall is located where? All City Halls are located within the jurisdiction of a colonial state. City Hall is nothing but a municipality. A municipality is designed to do what? Maintain naturalization. Municipalities are based in colonialism. Municipalities are based in naturalization. Municipalities are based in municipal law. When you look up the definition of municipal law in the Black Law Dictionary Fourth Edition, it says municipal law is a contradistinction to international law. So therefore, when the Moors turn around and say, well, Noah said, "Go to those who know law at City Hall." Well, we also know that Noah Dry Lee works, will compromise. You see, Moors, the answer to the test is international law, is not municipal laws of City Hall. Any laws that come from the United States of America, United States, then hand it down to the several states. The several states are actually charters. And those charters, let's say State of Alabama is example. State of Alabama is a charter. And State of Alabama, by being a charter, it has established several charters within it called counties. Counties are charters. And all counties have what's called municipal laws. That's why they call them municipalities. So therefore, if you go to the definition of municipal law that says it's a contradistinction to international law, which means it's repugnant, municipal law is repugnant to international law, then what should that have told Moors? That we should have been studying international law. That the municipalities don't like international law because international law enforces human rights. And when you start talking human rights, now you're talking about Moroccan rights. You're talking about Moroccan law. So the Moors have to understand that we just have been simply miseducated. However, at some point, we have to recognize what we did wrong and then correct it. We have to course correct and start doing it right. There is a such thing as making a mistake, but it's no longer a mistake once someone points it out to you. So if you continue to do the same thing over and over again knowingly you're doing the wrong thing, then what does that mean about you as a Moor? If you're caught up in your beliefs because you believe you're a Moorish American, then that's on you, it's Islam. But you can't ever say that no one didn't tell you the truth versus your de facto education. You see, the truth will set you free. But what I learned about the Moors, they don't want to hear the truth if it gets in the way of their compensation. Your Negro, Black, and colored spiritual leaders don't want to talk about the truth if it gets in the way of their compensation. You see, the Moors have undermined themselves just so they can basically step over a dollar in order to pick up a dime. We stole each other out. Now, don't get me wrong, the colonists is half the problem, right? We know about colonialism, but they're half the problem. But what about the other half? You see, Moors, if the colonies are 50% of the problem, that means the Moors have to take on the burden of the other 50%. And that 50% is broke down into percentages as well. What do I mean? If the colonies is 50% of the problem, okay, let's talk about the other half. The other half is broke down in three parts. 25% of it is because Moors have been simply sold out. That's 25%. Then you've got another 24% of Moors that's simply just ignorant to the fact, just ignorant, that's all, they just didn't know. That includes your Black people. Black people don't know that they're actually Moors. Moorish Americans thought they were Moorish Americans and now they're finding out they're not Moorish Americans because you're not American, you're just simply Moroccan, but you was stuck on what? Ignorance. So when you hear me say, "Moors are stuck on stupid," stupid means ignorant. I didn't say Moors were retarded. Retarded means you can't, you don't have the ability to learn and course correct. Stupid means just ignorant, you don't know the truth. So that's 24% of it right there, ignorance. But what's the last 1%? The 1% is the Moors who now know the truth, they're now returning to Morocco, restoring the Constitution, having Declaration of Independence, and they're starting to enforce Moroccan law. So now, the de jour Moors, the competent Moors, are only 1% of 100. We have to now start to make that number larger. We gotta go from 1% of the Moors understanding the truth and actually activating it because the 1% is to understand the strategy, to understand the preparation, to understand tactical execution and desired effect of decolonization, and understanding due process of law in order to achieve that. The 1% has to grow. The 1% has to go to the market space and understand, telling Moors, hey, you're not Moorish Americans, that's just the truth. Moorish Americans can't prove they're Moorish Americans, that's why the United States keep telling you it's a belief. You ain't been able to prove that you're Moorish American. You should admit that to yourself, you can't prove it. So therefore, the 1% has to grow and continue to grow, right? And therefore, at some point, we will decolonize because the truth is just simply the truth. The truth will set you free. Alright, so in the meantime, Moors, we have to understand that we're all in this together. Who's all in this together? Well, the competent Moors are in this together along with who? Those Moors who suffer from ignorance, right? Condundisness. But we're also in it with the sellout Moors because the sellout Moors are still Moors. We gotta fix this. Because the Moors have to understand that we are cohabitating with the Americans. What do I mean? The Americans were allowed to remain in Morocco through a treaty. The Americans have integrated into Morocco. That was the first integration. Moors are not trying to integrate with Americans. Americans were integrated with us after the year 1776. Once the Americans declared their independence, they wanted to get away from Great Britain. They had to understand, they had to pay allegiance to who? A different sovereign. The sovereign was Great Britain extending charters over into Morocco. They cut ties with Great Britain. After that, they pledged allegiance to who? The Empire of Morocco, See Muhammad. See Muhammad recognized the United States of America in 1777, right? See Muhammad allowed the 13 colonies to integrate into Morocco through a treaty. That must be understood, the first integration happened because the treaty recognized the Americans to allow Americans to integrate with us, the Moor Rockings. Moroccans are not trying to integrate with Americans. We've always been here. But we must understand how do we cohabit in peace and security. And this is where international law comes in to act as a buffer, right? To act as a referee. International law is non-opinionated. International law does not have an opinion, it's just law, it don't recognize your state. It recognizes law. And your state is either working within a law or is an outlaw, that's it. International law is neutral. So Moors have to learn how to master the neutrality of international law. Because whoever is standing within the law will prevail when they enforce that international law provision against a belligerent state. The worst problem with the Moors the whole time? We were stateless. You cannot enforce international law if you're stateless, and that's the truth. So if we start to get into this class today, we're gonna try to finish up with the reading of the Declaration of Intervention that the United States wrote on behalf of Ukraine. What I need the Moors to understand is, we're stronger together. Whether we're competent Moors or incompetent Moors or sellout Moors, we all have to find a way to wipe the slate clean and come back together. Because this thing is gonna move forward whether you like it or not. And we're stronger together against the United States of America. And we have to believe in that, we have to understand that we have to work together, we have to band together. Why do I say that? It's because we have an obligation. The treaties are not an option. The treaties is a mandate. The treaties say, "You shall do this and you shall do that." And the Moors haven't been living up to the expectations of our own treaties. We've been derelict in our own duties. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to the empire. So let's try to meet that expectation. Let's start getting back into the responsibility of our state. Let's clean up our state, let's take care of our state of affairs. It starts with us. Let's get into the class. Okay, as the Moors know, always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount, it's the first step in the right direction of enforcing international law, right? A treaty is recognized in international law because without, or should I say, the Constitution is recognized in international law, right? As being an international law instrument. It is not a treaty. But you cannot get access to treaties without a Constitution, right? It's a prerequisite, right? So through the Constitution, through your state, it's a portal to get access to international law, that must be understood, alright? Okay, let's continue. What do I have up here? Oh, man. Something I should have did months ago. This is contact information for AMPAC. From my understanding, a lot of Moors have been trying to reach out to AMPAC. They've gone to our old website, and that old website, we don't use it anymore, so they haven't been able to get in touch with AMPAC. So right here, I have up on the screen real quick, this is contact information for AMPAC State Government. You can see our email address, we have two email addresses you can use either or. We've got our website, our website is back up again, it's our new website, ampagov.org, you can check that out. It's, we're still working on trying to refresh it and get it to everyone. So right now, it's still a little rough, but it's still active, okay? Right here, YouTube, this is important. Okay, so I'm hearing from the Moors out there that can't find the classes. So on YouTube, if the Moors are starting to start at Class 1 through 78, here's where you go. So you go to YouTube channel, Alodion Morse's Pradium, Ante Colorado, and you go to playlist, and then you'll see the study sessions 1 through 78, okay? Alright, in addition to that, we have two YouTube channels, okay? So the second YouTube channel is called AMPAC Media. There you'll find study sessions 78 to present, alright? For those Moors just not starting to find AMPAC study session, this is what you'll find, are two separate YouTube channels, okay? So I just wanted to go that relatively quickly, alright, for the Moors, alright, okay? Alright, so in the class, we're starting to finally get into what's called Chapter 7 of the Charter of the United Nations. So far, we're only talking about the title, right? We haven't even got into Article 39 yet, even though we've been talking about it, but we haven't even started reading Articles 39 through 51 just yet. But Chapter 7 of the Charter talks about what? Action with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression, right? So when you're dealing with an action with respect to threats, how do you deal with threats? Well, sometime you come together as what? A class action lawsuit, commonly known as ergo omnis parties because you're dealing with what? Some type of threat to your state, right? So in Class 108, we know what? The definition of aggression. So the definition of aggression is basically what? Threats, right? Or breaches of the peace, right? You see how these things work in harmony, these three words, threats, breaches, aggression, right? So you need to have an act in order to deal with threats, breaches, and aggression. And what's the first act you needed? You need a state. That's your first act, that's paramount to have a state constitution, that's the first act in order to defend yourself. It's called state rights. Okay, what's the next act? Okay, once you have a state, you can work with other Moroccan states and come together the class action lawsuit, right? We all have to work together, we have to be the United States of Morocco Alliance, right? You see how the Europeans come together? They form an alliance all the time, they look out for each other, even though they can't stand each other, they look out for each other. And that's what Moors gotta understand, you don't have to like me, but we have to work together. Because we have a common denominator involved, which is what? Decolonization. And then once we decolonize, then we have to maintain the empire. And the only way we're gonna maintain is we work together. We have no choice but to work together, we gotta figure this thing out, okay? So once we work together, now we can deal with threats, we can deal with breaches of the peace, and we can deal with acts of aggression, right? As the United States of Morocco Alliance, okay? So what I have up here is the continuation reading, we've been going over the International Court of Justice where the United States wrote a Declaration of Intervention, and the United States was invoking a convention at United Nations Resolution, right? So what resolution were they using? They were using this one, okay? So it was about what? The Convention on the Provision and Punishment on the Crime of Genocide, okay? That's a convention. So the United States of America wrote this on behalf of Ukraine. They wrote a Declaration of Intervention to intervene in that dispute of what? What were they intervening? Okay, now you go back over to the Charter. You go back to the Charter. Why were they intervening? Because something was happening, right? There was an action with respect to threats to the peace, there was a breach of the peace, and it was acts of aggression. That's what was happening with Ukraine versus Russia, right? So the United States started invoking Articles from the International Court of Justice, Article 63, et cetera, right? And that's what we're going over right now, how to write a Declaration of Intervention. All the Moors have to learn how to write this through your state, right? We'll learn more about this in the future, but we gotta keep reading about this, okay? So let's go ahead and jump back down to where we left off, okay? Okay, alright. So the Moors know, this is where we left off. Let's go ahead and get into it, alright? This is page 16 on the PDF, okay? And it's number 26, only to the left, so paragraph number 26, but it's PDF page 16 out of 26, okay? From the top, nope?
26, oh, so the Genocide Convention does not authorize a contracting party to commit aggression against another contracting party on the pretext of preventing or punishing genocide, number 26. While the structure and negotiating history of the convention made clear that it is principally concerned with individual criminal responsibility for genocide and the other acts enumerated in Article 3, the Court has observed that the convention also prohibits contracting parties from committing through their organs or persons or groups whose conduct is attributable to them such acts. This, in this regard, the Court has viewed the duality of responsibility and contemplating the possibility of state responsibility for genocide and the other acts enumerated in Article 3.
Alright, pause, okay. Alright, so what do we have here thus far, Moors? Okay, we gotta get the proper concept and context, okay, before we go any further. We're starting to introduce the word aggression while saying at the same time the United States was talking about genocide and putting these two words together, alright? They're creating a duality, right? Okay, listen, okay, from the top, the Genocide Convention does not authorize a contracting party. What's a contracting party? That's a state, right? A state that's become party to the contract. A contracting party to commit aggression against another contracting party on the pretext of preventing or punishing genocide, okay? Section 26, while the structure and negotiating history of the convention made clear that it is principally concerned with individual criminal responsibility for genocide and other acts enumerated- and other acts enumerated in Article Three, the court had observed that the convention also prohibits contracting parties from committing through their organs, or persons, or groups, whose conduct is attributable to them such acts. In this regard, the court has viewed the convention as reflecting a duality of responsibility and contemplating the possibility of state responsibility for genocide and the other acts enumerated in Article Three. Okay, so first of all, let's look up Article Three. As a recap, let's look up Article Three of the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment on the Crime of Genocide, okay? So Article Three, this is what they continue to invoke, okay, we're listening.
Article Three, the following acts shall be punishable, A, genocide, B, conspiracy to commit genocide, C, direct and public incitement to commit genocide, D, attempt to commit genocide, and E, complicity in genocide.
Okay, so let's go back to the United States, who was writing this declaration of intervention. So right here, the court's talking about this duality of responsibility, what's the duality that the court is talking about? Well, the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Genocide has two responsibilities, either you're preventing genocide, or you're being punished for acts of genocide, that's duality, right? Okay. But then they start to break it down a little bit more, in this first paragraph, they were reading, that's why we have to pause right here. Check it out, Moors, okay. Says right here, the court has observed that the convention also prohibits contracting parties from committing through their organs, or persons, or groups, whose conduct is attributable to them such acts. Wait a minute, let's break down this sentence. You see how they're breaking down the parts, they're, they're, they're talking about what's called legal personalities? They're putting blame on different aspects of government. Listen, let's talk about it again, okay, here we go. The court has, has observed that the convention also prohibits contracting parties from committing through their organs, right? So from committing what? Genocide or acts of aggression through their organs, what are organs? Organs are the departments of a state, right? FBI, CIA, Homeland Security, right? Those are organs, right? State Department of the United States, right? Those are organs of the federal government, okay? But also, the federal government's also known as what? A person. Because the United States of America is known as a person in international law. The United States of America's a name. Is a person in international law. And the United States as a legal personality is what? An international organization, or also what's known as an intergovernmental organization, that's a legal personality, alright? It's also known as what? A person in international law, it's an artificial person, all these are artificial persons, okay? So right here, there can be no crime, right? There can be no genocide committed by a state, contracting parties or contracting states, from committing what? Through their organs, right? Or through persons, let me increase that size. Okay. The parties, contracting parties. Contracting parties from committing through their organs, right, their departments, or what? Or through, through persons, persons of any legal personality, or what? Or through any groups, any groups. See how they're breaking it down? They're putting blame on these different legal personalities. So you got the United States of America, you got the United States, then you've got all their departments, and then you've got all their persons who worked for those departments, and you also have groups. So international law is creating what you call a net, right? It's covering the bases of all these legal personalities. There's no room for any possible deniability, for the United States of America to say, well, United States of America, United States, which is basically one personality, we're trying to say, well, the federal government didn't have nothing to do with what the state of Alabama did to that Moor, well, no, it doesn't work like that. You see, the United States of America is responsible for all organs, departments, and persons underneath it, and what's a person? State of Alabama. State of Alabama has what? Organs, organs called what? Departments. What else does State of Alabama have? Municipalities, right? And all of their counties, because all their counties are charters, and all those charters are municipalities, and all those municipalities have police, sheriff, and magistrates, et cetera, right? Those are persons, those are groups, right? So international law holds all these legal personalities responsible under one umbrella called the United States of America. Okay? Alright, so that must be explained, okay? So right here, let me read it again, let me read it again. Right here says, the court, what court? ICJ has observed that the convention also prohibits contracting parties from committing through their organs, or through their persons, or through their groups, whose conduct is attributable to them such acts. For to blame on everybody, all the colonists, they can't run, because it's known to the principle, it's known to the agent. Known to the agent, it's known to the principle. You see that? Alright. Okay, so we already talked about this duality, the duality is either you're trying to prevent genocide, or you're gonna be punished for what you did regarding genocide, okay? Okay, let's move on down to the next sentence.
In recognition of the exceptional gravity of allegations that a contracting party is responsible for genocide or other acts enumerated in Article Three, the court has observed that it must be fully convinced that such allegations have been clearly established. In the absence of a state plan expressing the intent to commit genocide, the court has noted that to infer the existence of such intent from a pattern of acts covered by Article Two of the Convention, it is necessary and sufficient that this is the only inference that could reasonably be drawn from the acts in question. The court likewise has set a high bar for establishing that a contracting party has breached its obligations to prevent or punish genocide, requiring proof at a high level of certainty appropriate to the seriousness of the allegations.
Alright, let's move.
Twenty-seven, the genocide convention expressly provides contracting parties recourse where they believe another contracting party is responsible for genocide or for any of the other acts enumerated in Article Three of the Convention, or has failed to prevent or punish such acts. Article Eight of the genocide convention provides that contracting parties may call upon the competent organs of the United Nations to take such action under the Charter of the United Nations as they, the competent organs of the United Nations, consider appropriate for the prevention and suppression of acts of genocide or any of the other acts enumerated in Article Three of the genocide convention. As the court has previously observed, Eight is the only article after Article One that expressly addresses the prevention of genocide. Uh, twenty-eight, Article Nine further provides that disputes between the contracting parties relating to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the present convention, including those relating to the responsibility of a state for genocide or for any of the other acts enumerated in Article Three, shall be submitted to this court at the request of any of the parties to the dispute. Twenty-nine, no provisions of the genocide convention properly interpreted in good faith explicitly or implicitly authorizes a contracting party acting on the pretext of preventing or punishing genocide to commit aggression, including territorial acquisition resulting from aggression.
Alright, so now they're invoking this word aggression, right? There can be no aggression, right? Including territorial acquisition resulting from aggression, that's colonialism, right? The United States of America cannot maintain acquisition, it cannot acquire Morocco through acts of aggression, i.e. by use of force. Okay, that must be understood, okay? Alright.
The genocide convention confers jurisdiction on the court concerning disputes between the contracting parties relating to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the convention, including those relating to the responsibility of a state for genocide. Thirty, Article Nine of the genocide convention provides that this court has jurisdiction over disputes between the contracting parties relating to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the present convention, which may be submitted to the court at the request of any of the parties to the dispute. This includes disputes relating to the responsibility of a state for genocide or for any of the other acts enumerated in Article Three of the convention. The court has previously considered allegations by the contracting party that another contracting party is responsible for genocide or other acts enumerated in Article Three to constitute a dispute within the meaning of Article Nine. Use of the term fulfillment in Article Nine, in addition to interpretation and application, which more commonly appear in com- com- pros- compulsory? Compulsory clauses, um, likewise suggests that the contracting party's intended to the scope of the compulsory clause to be understood broadly, to include the court exercising jurisdiction over a contracting party's request that the court find the party has not committed a breach of the convention where its compliance with the convention is disputed by another contracting party. Thirty-one, where a contracting party commits aggression against another contracting party on the pretext of preventing or punishing genocide, and the contracting party subjected to aggression denies that it is responsible for genocide, it is plain that the parties disagree as to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the genocide convention, including with respect to the responsibility of a state for genocide or the other acts enumerated in Article Three within the meaning of Article Nine.
Alright, so let's, let's read this small text, alright, the highlighted area.
Um, in thirty-seven, it says, "No territorial acquisition or special advantage resulting from aggression is or shall be recognized as lawful." More generally, the prohibition of aggression is a preempery norm of international law, just cogits, from which no derogation is permitted.
Okay, Moors, so as you can see in the footnotes, the United States put in the footnotes that said, "No territorial acquisition or special advantage resulting from aggression is or shall be recognized as lawful," that's what the United States said. That's what we say in the United States, same words, right? Okay, continuing, it says, "More generally, the prohibition of aggression is a peremptory norm of international law, just cogits, from which no derogation is permitted." Oh, I'm glad you said that, United States. Right, so that means that in international law, there can be no act of aggression, there can be no acquisition, especially under use of force. So the United States is invoking this, the same thing Moors should invoke when we bring a suit of genocide against them, especially if it includes aggression, right? So this is what we learned from the United States, this is the reason why we're going over this declaration of intervention that the United States wrote on behalf of Ukraine versus Russia, so we can learn how to write, just like the United States, so we can bring a suit, that's a mirror image of what they wrote. That way, we know it's going to stick. Keep in mind, the United States has been practicing law for hundreds of years. So why would we not turn around and mirror image how they write? Understand the mentality, the concepts, and context, and contents of how they write. This is how we defeat them, we beat them with their own moves, right? Okay. Let's continue. Alright.
Documents in support of the declaration. On thirty-two, the following is a list of the documents in support of this declaration and attached here too. A, letter from the registrar to state's parties to the genocide convention dated, um, March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, Annex A. And B, instrument of ratification by the government of the United States of the genocide convention dated November twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-eight, Annex B.
Yeah, so here, now, what's happening right here, Moors? Okay, now we're getting into a different, uh, aspect of the writing, okay? What the United States submit, okay? So right here, it says, "Documents in support of the declaration." So now, the United States is now having an addendum to their declaration, okay, of intervention, they're adding a document to it, it says, okay, this is a document in support of the declaration, what declaration? Declaration on the Convention, the Convention, right? Right, so the declaration is their, the United States wrote a declaration of intervention, but they're adding more documents to support the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crime of Genocide. So here's what they said, it said, okay, thirty-two, the following is a list of the documents in support of this declaration. And attached here too, so in other words, an attachment, these are exhibits. They use the word annex instead of word exhibits, right? Further proof that the United States has a right to intervene, and they're invoking certain contracts, such as the Convention on Genocide, alright, so listen. Section A, a letter from the registrar to state's parties to the genocide convention dated March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, Annex A. Now, we're gonna learn about this, this is important, I'll read it again. So the United States is saying, "We received a letter from the registrar, registrar of the United, of the International Court of Justice," right? So the United States received a letter from the registrar of the International Court of Justice to state, plural, parties to the genocide convention dated March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So the registrar, the ICJ, sent the United States of America and the United States intergovernmental organization a letter on March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Regarding what? The fact that the United States is also a party to the Convention Genocide document, right? All states who are parties to the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment on the Crime of Genocide of nineteen forty-eight, any state that's a party to it gets notified by the ICJ. Any state, okay? All states get notified. Alright, so Section B. Instrumental ratification by the government of the United States of the United, of, of the genocide convention dated November twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-eight, Annex B. So you got Annex A, exhibit, exhibit B, so they use the word annex. In international law. Okay, so what is Annex B about? Okay. Now, the United States is showing proof, they, right? They're showing proof that they ratified, right? They ratified the Convention on nineteen eighty-eight. Ratification, what does ratification mean? Where, okay. What does ratification mean? Okay, what do I have up here? So let's say from the United Nations, now we're looking at the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment on the Crime of Genocide of nineteen forty-eight. How does that become law for your state? How did that become law for the United States of America? Well, they took that resolution, right? And they brought it back to the legislative branch. So up here, I got the United States Constitution, and now it's disclosed there are three branches of government, okay? So right here, they got the legislative branch, which they call Congress. And Congress has two branches, you got the House of Representatives, right? Got the House of Representatives, and you got the Senate. Well, first, they brought that Convention back as a contract to pass it through the legislative branch, so it had to go through these two houses, House of Representatives and the Senate. Once they accepted, right? They approved of the Convention from the International Court, right? Not the, not the International Court, but the United Nations, General Assembly. Once they accepted that, uh, Convention, and they ratified it through the legislative branch, I mean, they signed it, right? They accepted it, they passed it over to the executive branch, which is the President of the United States. The United States then, the President of the United States then signed it and fully ratified it. So both the legislative branch signed it, and the executive branch signed it, making it now fully executed. Bill is now law. Right? Now it's law. Once these two branches, executive branch and the legislative branch, sign it, now it's called fully ratified. What do they do with it next? Then they deposit the United Nations in the Court of Article One or Two of the Charter. Right? Then it comes into full force and effect. Okay, so what is the United States saying here? Now, they're saying on the Section B. B, instrumental ratification by the government of the United States of the genocide convention dated November twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-eight. What happened in nineteen eighty-eight? That's the date they finally passed it through the legislative branch, over to the executive branch, and signed it into law. But wait a minute. But wait a minute. The Convention for the United Nations came out in nineteen forty-eight. The United States of America is just not becoming a, a, a ratification party, contracting party to it in nineteen eighty-eight. So forty years had went by before they became a party to it through ratification. Forty years. Why is it, why did it take them forty years? Because they didn't want to put their name on a contract that held them to the standards of genocide. You see? What else did they sign? Because they know what they did with Mohammed the Fifth between the years of nineteen fifty-six and nineteen fifty-nine. They attempted to genocide the Moor Rockets in the West nationality with Mohammed the Fifth. So they held out for a long time before they actually ratified the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment on the Crime of Genocide of nineteen forty-eight. They waited forty years. Because they also know what they did to the Moors between the year nineteen fifty-six and nineteen fifty-nine. You see what's happening? But guess what? Ain't no such thing as halfway crooks. They still gonna get exposed, right? It always get exposed. Okay, so there, there are attaching, these are attachments, okay? Attachments of exhibits, i.e. annexes. Okay, conclusion. So now, the United States is concluding. They're, they're, they're summing it up, right? Okay. Look what they do in their conclusion. Okay. Section thirty-three.
Conclusion thirty-three. On the basis of the information set out above, the United States avails itself of the right conferred upon it by Article sixty-three, Paragraph Two of the Statute to intervene as a non-party in the proceedings brought by Ukraine against the Russian Federation in this case. Thirty-four. The United States reserves the right to supplement or amend this Declaration as may be necessary.
Okay, so what's happening in Section thirty-three if they're concluding? It says, "On the basis of the information set out above," the United States, you notice they don't say the United States of America? They keep saying the United States, that's why I highlighted. "The United States avails itself of the right conferred upon it by Article seventy, sixty-three, Paragraph Two of the Statute of the International Court," right, International Criminal Court, excuse me, International Court of Justice. Alright, "to intervene as non-party." This is what Moore's have to write. Okay, so we have several Moroccan states, right? Let me give you an example. We have several Moroccan states. And we have several Moroccan states, a group of states. If one of the states, let's say, uh, Maroue State Republic, right? Maroue State Republic, which is Antay, Antay, uh, Indiana, okay? If, if now there's some act of aggression, or some act of a genocide by the State of Indiana and its governor, attorney general, magistrates, police, sheriff, et cetera, if Maroue State Republic needs our help of these other five states, well, first of all, you gotta understand, what the State of Indiana's doing to Maroue State Government has nothing to do with these other five states, because it was a direct attack. What the State of Indiana does against Maroue State Republic is a direct attack against Maroue State Republic. But it's not a direct attack against these other five states. But it's an indirect attack. So when it's indirect, now the Moors come together under ergo honest parties to say, "No." An attack against one state is an attack against all states. However, we're still, let's take, um, let's take, uh, AMPAM, right? Acronym AMPAM, Alodium Moroccan Paridium Antay Michigan, which is- Antay Michigan Territory, State of Michigan now is a Moroccan state, right? So AMPAM, right, so AMPAM would be a non-party to what the infraction's happening of the State of Indiana infringing against the rights of Maroue State Republic, right? It would be a non-party because AMPAM, right, Antay Michigan, was not affected directly. So they're not a party that's actually being injured directly. AMPAM is not being attacked directly, don't have a direct injury, they got an indirect injury. Okay? Let's go back to the United States, see what they said. Okay? So right here, let's take from the top. Thirty-three. "On the basis of the information set out above, the United States avails itself of the right conferred upon it by Article sixty-three, Paragraph Two of the Statutes to intervene as a non-party." So what should Moore learn from this? That we can use the Charter as well as the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article sixty-three, Paragraph Two, to intervene, right? In case someone, in case a colonial state such as the State of Indiana is doing something against a Moroccan state such as Maroue State Republic. Even international law allows us to intervene, right? But what else allows us to intervene? What else could we write down as an exhibit that gives us the legal nature to intervene into that dispute? How is it that? These other five states, one, two, three, four, five, can come and help this one state, Maroue State Republic. What, what else gives us a legal nature? Okay, it's called what?
The WRC.
The WRC. The Convention in the Empire Morocco, the Wazir Regional Council, which is the WRC, is a contract that all the recognized Moroccan states have signed, right? And you go down to the preamble, right? So we've all become a party to it. The, the circle seven state of facts, these circle seven state of facts, right? Circle seven state of facts. You come down to the preamble, and the preamble will give us the right to intervene, right? So you're gonna come down, right? We're, we're, we're in the preamble, right? We're in the preamble. You come down, you come down, okay, and you read in the preamble. Right here, it says, "Emphasizing that the combined efforts of states to any dispute can be expressed through a joint Declaration of Intervention as ergo honest parties to help unite our efforts for the common defense of our interdependent states." You see that? So through this contract, knowing already have a right, a legal nature, to intervene. Okay, so we would add that to, to this part right here. We would say, okay, the United States saying they have a right to intervene in what's going on with Ukraine, because of what the, uh, the Statutes of the International Court of Justice said in Article sixty-three, Paragraph Two, so Moore's can invoke that. But we can also invoke what? The WRC Convention, that we've agreed to come together as ergo honest parties, i.e. a class action lawsuit against any belligerent state on planet Earth, right? Okay. Now, check this out. Look at this signature. Nova, can you read that?
Richard C. Visick, Agent of the United States of America.
Now, look how they signed that. You, you see what's happening? Why didn't they put Agent of the United States of America all in one line? Why they have this drop down that says, "Of America"? It's because they know they're operating under two legal personalities, of the United States of America and the United States, two legal personalities, so they play these games. They say, "Oh, I'm Richard C. Visick, I'm an agent of the United States," right? But I'm gonna say I'm an agent of the United States of America, but Richard C. Visick never, ever took his allegiance to the United States of America, never. Never. The United States of America exists in name only, it's void of a government. So you see the games the United States played? This is called fraud, right? Knowingly committing fraud.
Yeah.
Right, so they, 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 another, another reason why they do this is to fool the citizens of the United States of America. They don't want to tell the citizens of the United States of America that they invoked a Constitution in eighteen seventy-one called the United States. They don't want to tell the citizens the truth. This is why the United States does not like Moors. Because Moors keep telling the truth to who? Americans. Americans don't know this game's been played, the vast majority don't, don't have a clue. Right? So look what they write. Richard C. Visick, Agent of the United States, see, that's the truth. Then he throws in "of America" as an aphor. You see? That's how you know they know they're committing fraud. But guess what? He didn't have no choice but to say he's the Agent of the United States of America, because only the United States of America can be a party to a treaty or contract. So he's invoking that name, even though the name exists in name only. But he's not being truthful, is he? He should say he's the Agent of the United States on behalf of the United States of America. What's wrong with just putting both names there? They should've said, "Agent of the United States on behalf of the United States of America." It should've been written right here, "United States of America." But they don't want to write that, because the bankers, the regional bankers, and the international bankers, don't want the Americans to find out they've been steed and hypothesized ever since eighteen seventy-one. That's the truth. So they keep playing this hybrid game, right? Let me ask the Moors a question. I got the Constitution of the United States of America in my hand, or is this the Constitution of the United States? Let me start all over. This is really a question for the Americans to tell you the truth. If I was to ask the American citizen, "Is this the Constitution of the United States of America of seventeen eighty-nine, or is this the Constitution of the United States of eighteen seventy-one? Which one is it?" You know what they tell you? "I don't know." Because they didn't even know there was two constitutions in the first place. But if they knew it was two constitutions, okay, then which one is it that you're reading that's in my hand? Because if you open this up, it'll never tell you a date. It goes right into reading the Constitution. But it won't tell you, is it the Constitution of seventeen eighty-nine, or is it the Constitution of eighteen seventy-one? This is how they're even fooling their citizens, they never put the date on the Constitution. Never put it in these books. When they, when they print these, there's no dates. I, I challenge any Americans, go look up a book, hardcover, softcover, and start reading the Constitution, you won't see a date. They don't want their citizens to know the truth. Alright, so let's continue. Okay. Alright, so then, certification, okay? Nova?
Certification. I certify that the documents attached by way of annexes to this Declaration are true copies of the originals thereof. Richard C. Visick, Agent of the United States of America.
Alright, so just certification, and he sent some original documents, okay? And once again, he signed another document, this same old fraud. Richard C. Visick, Agent of the United States of America, as an aphor. Sad, isn't it? Let's continue. They don't want to admit to the Americans that they have had steed and hypothesized. And who did it? The bankers. Who else did it? The judges, the legislators, and the executive branch. They all sold out. All the judges have sold out. All the attorneys have sold out. And you can't become a judge in the United States until you've been an attorney first. So the attorneys know about this already. Before they can even become a judge, they gotta be an attorney of the bar association, right? Bar, representing, the acronym of British Accredited Registry, right? So the legislators know this, because they all take their oath to the United States. We're gonna learn more about that, okay? Alright, so what's this next one? Annex A.
Annex A, letter from the Registrar to State Parties to the Genocide Convention dated on March thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two.
So the United States is showing now the exhibit of Annex A, that said they received a letter from the Registrar to State Parties to the Genocide Convention dated March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So the letter dated March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two was the letter that came from the ICJ. Why is the United States talking about this? Because they're trying to say they was given notification that they could come in more or less intervene, right? That's what Moors have to understand. When Moors come together through their several states, we have to write a letter that says, well, the WRC, the Wazir Regional Council, right? The Wazir Regional Council sent a letter to one of the Moroccan states and said, "The Wazir Regional Council had permission to come and intervene to deal with, let's say, Maroue State." Let's go back to it. Maroue State Government is being, right, attacked by the State of Indiana's governor, mayor, magistrate, or whatever, right? And now all of a sudden, AMPAM, AMPAM wants to come and help along with these other Moroccan states, okay? So what would happen is, the WRC would have a notification, right, certification that says, "These other one, two, three, four, five states have permission to come and intervene into Maroue State Republic's probably having with the State of Indiana." Okay, so let's go back. So Annex A, "Letter from the Registrar to State Parties to the Genocide Convention dated March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two." So in other words, the WRC would send a letter out to all the Moroccan states that are parties to the WRC to say, "Hey, Maroue's got a problem with the State of Indiana. Maroue State Republic has a problem with the State of Indiana." Right? So that's what the WRC was sent out to all the other Moroccan states, to give them notice as to what the problem is, which would give all the other Moroccan states, let's go back to it. The WRC would give all these states, one, two, three, four, five, notice that Maroue State is having problems with the State of Indiana. Once these five other states receive notice, now they have a right to draft a Declaration of Intervention to become a party of, part of a class action lawsuit commonly known as ergo honest parties. Okay? That's important for Moors to understand, we're talking about forms now, right? Standard operating procedures. So that's why the United States is pointing this out, okay? They say, "Well, we got a letter from the ICJ, that's why we're intervening," okay? Okay. Let's continue. Okay, here's the letter. Here's the actual letter. Okay, the letter's from the International Court of Justice, the Registrar. As you can see over here, it's in French, and then we've got English, right? French and English, okay? So, and we all know that French always comes before English, because France was controlling the empire through the Treaty of Thessos nineteen twelve up until nineteen fifty-six, and the Charter didn't come out until nineteen forty-five, so France was overseeing the empire, and that's why everything's written in French and English, right? Okay. So this is the actual letter that the Registrar from the ICJ sent to the United States, okay?
I have the honor to refer to my letter number one-five-six-two-five-three dated on two March of twenty-twenty-two, informing your government that on twenty-sixth of February of twenty-twenty-two, Ukraine filed in the Registry of the Court an application instituting proceedings against Republic of the Russian Federation in the case concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, Ukraine versus Russia, Russian Federation. A copy of the application was appended to that letter. The text of the application is also available on the website of the Court of www.icj-cij.org. Article sixty-three, Paragraph One of the Statute of the Court provides that, "Whenever the construction of the, of a Convention to which states other than those concerned in the case are parties is in question, the Registrar shall notify all such states forthwith." Further, under Article forty-three, Paragraph One of the Rules of Court, "Whenever the construction of a Convention to which states other than those concerned in the case are parties may be in question within the meaning of Article sixty-three, Paragraph One of the Statute, the Court shall consider what direction shall be given to the Registrar in the matter. On the instructions of the Court, given in accordance with the said provisions of the Rules of Court, I have the honor to notify your government of the following. In the above-mentioned application, the nineteen forty-eight Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide herein after the Genocide Convention is invoked both as a basis of the Court's jurisdiction and as a substantive basis of the applicant's claims on the merits. In particular, the applicant seeks to found the Court's jurisdiction on the compulsory clause contained in Article Nine of the Genocide Convention, asks the Court to declare that it has not committed a genocide as defined in Articles Two and Three of the Convention, and raises questions concerning the scope of the duty to prevent and punish genocide under Article One of the Convention." It therefore appears that the construction of this instrument will be in question in the case. Letter to the State's Parties to the Genocide Convention except Ukraine and the Russian Federation."
Okay, so what's happening here, Morse? So this particular letter came from who? The Registrar of the ICJ. So therefore, when it comes to Morse, who, what court would send this letter regarding Morse? If the Morse was going to counsel court, let's say it's Maro State Republic, right? Let's go back. If Maro State Republic was the interstate, such as Ukraine was entering, Maro State Republic's counsel court and its registrar was sending notification out to all these other five Morse states. And what would the registrar say? Okay, we just read it, right? So we will s- s- write similar language, such as what the registrar wrote here, that's, that was sent out to all states on planet Earth that had a right to intervene because all the other states are parties to that convention, that contract, right? So Morse would do the same thing. Morse who are now a party to both the WRC convention, right? The convention itself. If you're a party to the WRC, okay? And you're a party to the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide of nineteen forty-eight, now the court, the counsel court of Maro State Republic and its registrar can send notifications out the same way the registrar was doing of the ICJ. And what would the registrar of the counsel court of Maro State Republic write to the other Morse states? Well, they would write something similar to this. Letter that the registrar wrote to the United States of America, similar language, right? Plug and play, copy paste, copy paste, plug and play, I should say, right? Okay, that's just basic information for the Morse to know. Okay? Let's continue. Okay? So this is the last part of it, right here.
Your country is included in the list of parties to the Genocide Convention. The present letter should accordingly be regarded as a notification contemplated on Article sixty-three, paragraph one of the Statute. It would add that this notification in no way prejudges any questions of the possible application of Article sixty-three, paragraph two of the Statute, which the Court may later be called upon to determine in this case. Except, Excellency, the assurances of my highest consideration. Billy Gaultier, Register.
Okay. So the Morse, either our own registrar of counsel court, just sent out a similar language letter like this to the other Moroccan states that's been recognizing they're part of the WRC, the Wazir Regional Council, okay? This is what we're learning from these Morse, alright? Okay, let's continue. Keep in mind, the United States is adding this as an annex, i.e. exhibit, they're showing proof that the ICJ have reached out to them. Right? That way they can show they have a right to have an intervention to deal with Ukraine. They was basically asked to come and be a part of the dispute, okay? Annex B.
Annex B, Instrument of Ratification by the Government of the United States of the Genocide Convention dated November twenty-fifth of nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay, now check this out. Now the United States is now uploading the actual convention that they signed. So what, what do Morse have to do? W- we have to also let Maro State government know, let's say we're dealing with a problem, state of Indiana. State of Indiana is doing something against Maro- Maro State Republic, right? We have to turn around and through our exhibit, we have to prove to the Maro State Republic that the other Moroccan states, the other five states, listen. That these other one, two, three, four, five, these other Moroccan states are also party to international law, such as the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide of nineteen forty-eight. We have to prove that we're a party to it in order for us to be able to defend it, right? Listen. So that's what the United States is doing through Annex B. They can already now show you, okay, we're a party to that contract. We're gonna prove it, okay? Watch this. Okay, here we go. Alright, so now this is what you call the accession document. They're gonna show, they show that, okay, the President ratified that contract coming on as the Genocide Convention. They'll show that the President has already ratified, right? It went through the constitutional procedures of the United States, right? Okay, so let's read about it.
Ronald Reagan, President of the United States of America, to all, to whom these presents shall come greeting. Considering that, the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the gen- of the Crime of Genocide was signed on behalf of the United States of America on the December eleventh of nineteen forty-eight.
Pause. Wait a minute. I thought they ratified it in nineteen eighty-eight. Oh, okay. Now the Morse should learn something. Listen. So the President, Ronald Reagan, signed the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide of nineteen forty-eight. He signed it on nineteen forty-eight in good faith. Okay? Listen. So the President Reagan signed it, representing the executive branch, he signed it in good faith. But the, but Reagan then bring it back to the legislative branch. So the legislative branch could then do what? Ratify as a bill, turn it into a bill through the legislative branch so that the House of Representatives and the Senate could then consent to it and then send it back over to Ronald Reagan so he could fully ratify it into law. In other words, he signed it on an international level in good faith. There's a signature on it, yes. But it wasn't fully ratified through the constitutional procedures, through the legislative branch, and back over to the executive branch so Ronald Reagan could sign it. They didn't do that until nineteen eighty-eight. Right? I think Truman signed it in eighty-eight. Okay. Listen. Let's go back. Matter of fact, Truman signed it in forty-eight. Right? And Reagan signed it in eighty-eight. Get my math together here, okay? It's sequential order, okay? Alright, so let's start all over from the top again.
Ronald Reagan, President of the United States of America, to all, to whom these presents shall come greeting. Considered, considering that, the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide was signed on behalf of the United States of America on December eleventh of nineteen forty-eight.
Pause right there again. So it was signed on behalf of the United States of America on December eleventh, nineteen forty-eight. So it was signed in good faith by the President. But it was never ratified. Turned into internal law of the United States to be a contracting party to it. They were still not a contracting party to it. They signed it in good faith. It was halfway there. They did a halfway thing with the signature from the President. When they know the constitutional procedure, procedures, they gotta bring it back and pass it through the House and then send it back to the executive branch to sign it into law. That's why you see Donald Trump with his big giant shocky, he can't wait to sign it into law. Right? So in nineteen forty-eight, right? Truman signed it in nineteen forty-eight. But wait a minute, let me get the other example. You know how the Morse kept saying, uh, uh, Barack H. Obama signed the Rights of Indigenous People in twenty-ten? Wait a minute. So Barack H. Obama signed the Rights of Indigenous People in twenty-ten? But tell me, when did the legislative branch take that resolution of the Rights of Indigenous People and pass it through the legislative branch and sign it and send it over back to Obama so he could sign it into law? It never happened. The United States is not a contracting party to the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People two thousand and seven, even though Obama signed it with a signature in twenty-ten. So therefore, the United States is not a contracting party to the Rights of Indigenous People. But Morse keep trying to invoke it as if President Obama had made it law. It's not law of the land. It's in good faith. It doesn't become law until it's passed by legislators. Legislators through a bill make it law. Once they, once they sign the bill, they consent to it, and they send it over to the executive branch, and then the executive branch, Obama, could have signed it after Nancy Pelosi, Mitch McConnell, and Paul Ryan and the crew over here. If they had have passed it back to Obama, he would have signed it into law, but that never happened. To date, we're in year twenty-twenty-three. But Morse run around acting like it was the law of the land. Misconcept. Miseducation. Young Morse American teachers don't tell you this stuff. They have you run around here thinking that the United States of America is a criminal because they ain't enforcing the Rights of Indigenous People. Well, the United States cannot enforce the Rights of Indigenous People to help Morse because the United States is not a contracting party to the Rights of Indigenous People. You gotta understand what I'm saying here. Morse don't understand government. And Noam Blasey said, "We have to learn government from the Europeans," and what did the Morse do? They didn't learn government. They didn't. We've delayed our own justice. So going back to the United States. So Truman, Harry Truman, signs it in nineteen forty-eight, but it wasn't ratified until nineteen eighty-eight, forty years later. Let's continue to read. Now you're gonna see di- now you're gonna see different verbiage, listen.
Uh, the Senate of the United States of America, by its resolution of February nineteen of nineteen eighty-six, two-thirds of the senators present concurring therein gave his adva- advice and consent to ratification of the Convention subject to the following reservations.
Okay, now wait a minute. Now the second sentence says, they finally did what? Okay, says, "The Senate of the United States of America, by its resolution of February nineteen, nineteen eighty-six, two-thirds of the senators present concurring therein gave his advice and consent to ratification." See? It's no longer signed, now it's been ratified. Of the Convention subject to the following reservations, okay? So now there's a big difference between ratification and just simply signature. Okay? Alright, so now I'm gonna get into what's called reservations. You see this word, Morse? This is an important word right here. Reservation. What does reservation mean? You see, the United States said, well, we, we, we reserve the right to either strike a provision from the Convention on the Provision and Punishment of Genocide of nineteen forty-eight. They're reserving some rights that, under the internal law. Their internal law, they're saying, yeah, we'll ratify, but we wanna strike some words from the contract, or we wanna co- create some internal law or legislation or policy that kinda changes the words. Right? This is what the United States does. They don't like generic language. They wanna add words to contracts, right? Why is that? Because they wanna set a higher bar or standard. Because see, if they accept it as is, that's a general law. They don't like general law. They wanna set a bar higher. That way they can't be held responsible unless it reaches some high standard. See, everything they do, they, they push the bar up so they, so it doesn't meet the threshold. That way they can't be held liable for what they've done. They don't like generic language because generic language gets them caught up. Right? Okay. So the word reservations means, the United States may go through and, and start redlining some stuff in the contract. And I don't like that word, let's add this word. Okay, that's what reservation means. Okay, now let's start explaining it. Okay.
One, that with reference to Article nine of the Convention, before any dispute to which the United States is a party, may be submitted to the jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice. Under this article, the specific consent of the United States is required in each case.
Alright, so in other words, in Article nine of the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, Article nine said, if there's a, if, if there's a genocide act, both parties can go straight to the ICJ and seek, uh, uh, some type of relief. Where the United States says right here, they, they add some word, they say, it says, right, it says jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice under this article, Article nine, the specific consent of the United States is required in each case. You see, they added later says, nah, you gotta kinda get our permission before you can take us to the ICJ. But yet, the Convention says you automatically, it's compulsory that you go to the ICJ. Automatically. If somebody now petitions the United States as being a respondent, i.e. defendant, and another state is bringing a suit against the United States of America, well, automatically international law says, you can automatically go to the ICJ. The United States turns around and they start redlining stuff and say, nah, let's add some different language says, first you gotta get our permission. You gotta get our permission before you can take us to the ICJ. Well, guess what, Morse? This is what you call internal law of the United States. It cannot stand in international law. They can't just change a contract. They can, in, in their internal law, they can put whatever words they want in it. They can say, no, we want Ronald McDonald to be the judge. Okay, sounds good in your internal law. But when you deal with international law, international law will say, we don't care about your internal law, the United States of America. We don't care about you redlining international law. It cannot stand. So if another state brings a suit, guess what's gonna happen to the United States? They gonna receive a summons from the ICJ to make an appearance at the ICJ according to the strict sense of how that Convention was written originally. So don't let the United States fool you with all their little changes internally, right? Internal law cannot stand, okay? Alright, so let's, let's go ahead and continue to read. We'll speed through this a little bit, Morse, because it's just a bunch of mishmash. This is mishmash on the United States because they know it can't stand. Next, number two.
Two, that nothing in the Convention requires or authorizes legislation or other action by the United States of America prohibited by the Constitution of the United States as interpreted by the United States.
Well, wait a minute, this is so confusing. Wait, oh, hold up. Section two, that nothing in the Convention requires or authorizes legislation or other actions by the United States of America prohibited by the Constitution of the United States to legal per- personalities as interpreted by the United States. Wait a minute. Are they the United States of America or are they the United States? Well, they're both, aren't they? Because they're, they're operating under two legal personalities. This is why they don't teach about international law in schools. They don't want the Americans to find out about these, these two legal personalities. But let's pause right here for a moment. Now, in the beginning, so we can clear this up, what, what do we learn when they start opening up to tell the whole world about their signature or their ratification to this contract of genocide? They open up by saying what? Ronald Reagan, President of the United States of America. See, under his watch, they ratified it, right? But wait, is Ronald Reagan the President of the United States of America? The answer is what?
No.
No, right? Well, hold up. Let's prove that. Okay. So who is Ronald Reagan the President of? Okay, just a moment. Let's take a look at Ronald Reagan's inauguration. Just a moment. Now, before I hit play, you're gonna hear Ronald Reagan take his oath to the United States Constitution, not the Constitution of the United States of America. But what you really gotta catch is, who's administering the oath to Ronald Reagan? It's the Chief Judge of the- It's the Chief Judge of the Supreme Court. But the Chief Judge is enforcing and having Ronald Reagan taking an oath to what? The Constitution of the United States, not the Constitution of the United States of America. So what does that tell you? That the Chief Judge of the Supreme Court is a fraud because he knows he himself has taken an oath to the United States Constitution. Now, before I play this, let's remind ourselves, right? Let's remind ourselves, what, what is the United States? Okay, let's look it up real quick. Cornell Law School, right? Legal information institution. Anybody can look up twenty-eight USC Code, Section three thousand and two definitions. None of the definitions. You could add a Section fifteen A, right? The Moors know about this as a reminder before we listen to Ronald Reagan and we listen to the Chief Judge of the Supreme Court. Uh, can, can you, can you read that Section fifteen A?
Section fifteen, United States means, A, a federal corporation.
That's right. So the United States is a federal corporation. That's what their internal law say. But in international law, they're what? An international organization. In international law, they're what you call an intergovernmental organization. Both of those things mean the same. But their internal law domestically, they refer themselves as a federal corporation. Okay, now let's go over to Ronald Reagan, okay? Taking his oath in nineteen eighty-one. Keep in mind, who's giving him the oath? The Chief Judge, who's a sellout because he knows that the Constitution of the United States of America is not being used to give the oath to the President. He knows this. Why? Because the Chief Judge of the Supreme Court himself took an oath to the United States Constitution and not the Constitution of the United States of America. They all know this game is being played. Listen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I now present the Chief Justice of the United States, the Honorable Warren Burger, who will administer the oath of office to the President-elect. Governor, are you prepared to take the constitutional oath?
I am.
Place your left hand on the Bay Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ronald Reagan, do solemnly swear.
I, Ronald Reagan, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office of President of the United States.
That I will faithfully execute the office of President of the United States.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Okay, Moors. As you can see, Ronald Reagan took his oath to the United States Constitution. So why are they saying Ronald Reagan is the President of the United States of America? It's fraud. You see that? And all of their presidents have been taking this same oath to the United States federal corporation since eighteen seventy-one. They don't wanna tell the Americans they've been extuded and hypothesized by the regional and international bankers. They don't wanna tell the Americans that the attorneys, judges, legislators, and executors have all sold out the Americans. This is why the United States and the governors don't like Moors. Because Moors keep telling the truth to the Americans. See, the world already knows these truths. It's only Moors is learning this truth. And the regional and international bankers have been getting away with this fraud by saying, "Ronald Reagan and all the presidents are Presidents of the United States of America, and United States of America exists in name only." Because all of them take their oath to the United States federal corporation. That must be understood, right? Alright, so we're gonna skip on down. Okay, I just wanted to show the Moors that. That's why this Section two seems convoluted, right? Let's read it again. That nothing in the convention requires or authorizes legislation or other action by the United States of America prohibited by the Constitution of the United States as interpreted by the United States. So therefore, when you see this constitution, which one is it? It's a hybrid, isn't it? See, the front of it'll tell you, "Oh, this is the Constitution of the United States of America." But then when you open up and start reading it, quickly you realize it's the Constitution of the United States. Just read its articles. Article one tells you everything you need to know. Read it. That's the message to the Americans, okay? Alright, let's go ahead and move on down. Let's skip on past all this mishmash. Okay, alright, let's read, let's see what Ronald Reagan's saying. Alright.
Now, therefore, I, Ronald Reagan, President of the United States of America, ratify and confirm the said convention subject to the above reservations and understandings. In testimony whereof, I have signed this instrument of ratification and caused the seal of the United States of America to be affixed. Done at the City of Washington this fourteenth day of November in the year of our Lord, one thousand nine hundred eighty-eight, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the two hundred, the two, um, hundred thirteenth.
Two hundred and thirteenth year, okay? So as you can see, Moors, Ronald Reagan is committing fraud. As you can see, the United States is committing fraud in all of their departments, all of their agents. All of them know that it's the United States and not the United States of America. The United States of America exists in name only, right? Okay, now, I find this very interesting right here. We gotta do a little math. Anybody got a calculator? Okay, if they're signing this in nineteen eighty-eight, see, in the year of our Lord, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight, alright, so that's nineteen eighty-eight. But look what, look what Ronald Reagan says, "And of our independence of the United States of America, the two hundred and thirteenth." Two hundred and thirteenth what? Year. Okay, can somebody do the math of nineteen eighty-eight minus two hundred and thirteenth? I think it's two hundred and thirteenth, seventeen seventy-five, right? So Ronald Reagan is invoking saying their Declaration of Independence started in seventeen seventy-five. And they declared their independence in seventeen seventy-six, right? So seventeen seventy-six is their Declaration of Independence, right? Listen to me, Moors. As I, as I start getting closer to closing out. So if Ronald Reagan is saying their Declaration of Independence around seventeen seventy-five, seventeen seventy-six, okay? When did C.D. Muhammad recognize the thirteen colonies? Well, that was in the year seventeen seventy-seven, okay? December seventeen seventy-seven is when C.D. Muhammad recognized the thirteen colonies. Why did he recognize them? It's because they had a Declaration of Independence. But the thirteen colonies were still stateless. They had no states. They only had a Declaration of Independence. Then after that, what? They were trying to form their states. They were still colonies. They were still colonies. So what did they do next? Now that Muhammad, uh, C.D. Muhammad has recognized their Declaration of Independence, but they were stateless in that moment because they had broke away from who? Great Britain. Now they're what you call no man's land, right? They're stateless. They have no protections. So C.D. Muhammad comes in and say, "I don't recognize your Declaration of Independence, and I'll start providing you with what's called protections." So what happens next? The United States thirteen colonies come together and enact a constitution finally in the year seventeen eighty-one. Keep in mind, they didn't draft their flag, the Betsy Ross flag, until seventeen seventy-seven. So seventeen seventy-seven, now you fast forward to seventeen eighty-one, they're finally putting together a constitution. But their constitution was based in what? The Continental Congress. The Continental Congress lasted from seventeen eighty-one to seventeen eighty-eight, okay? They have now deposited that constitution with C.D. Muhammad. But lord behold, they're reading over that constitution of the Continental Congress, and they're saying, "Man, us thirteen colonies, we can't sign treaties with nobody." Because the thirteen colonies were still under the dependency of Great Britain, even through that constitution of the Continental Congress. So what happens next? George Washington pops up. He says, "You know what? We gotta dissolve that constitution of the Confederacy. The Continental Congress needs to be dissolved." Why? It's because George Washington wanted to get away fully from Great Britain. And that Continental Congress of seventeen eighty-one, that constitution did not allow them full independence. So they dissolved the constitution of the Continental Congress in seventeen eighty-eight. But wait a minute. They signed a treaty of peace and friendship in seventeen eighty-seven. So how is it they could sign a treaty of peace and friendship in seventeen eighty-seven if the constitution of the Continental Congress did not allow them to sign treaties? Okay, now you gotta know the history. George Washington and the thirteen colonies turned around and broke away from the Continental Congress in seventeen eighty-seven. So in seventeen eighty-seven, the thirteen colonies start to get into what they call a contention to establish a new constitution commonly known as the Constitution of the United States of America, seventeen eighty-seven. Seventeen eighty-seven is the same year that the United States of America signed the treaty, seventeen eighty-seven. C.D. Muhammad signed it in seventeen eighty-six. C.D. Muhammad was waiting for them to sign off on the treaty. But then C.D. Muhammad realized, "Well, man, that constitution y'all got really says y'all still under the thumb of Great Britain. You can't sign this treaty until you really have full independence." So George Washington and the crew turn around and say, "Well, let's get rid of that old constitution of the Continental Congress." So in seventeen eighty-seven, they enact a brand-new constitution, seventeen eighty-seven. And they sign off on the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, seventeen eighty-seven. Keep in mind that C.D. Muhammad signed it in seventeen eighty-six. He was just waiting on the thirteen colonies to sign. So they finally signed it in seventeen eighty-seven, but wait a minute. When did the United States of America's constitution come into full force and effect? That wasn't until seventeen eighty-nine. Their Constitution, United States of America, didn't come into full force and effect until seventeen eighty-nine. So since it didn't come into full force and effect till seventeen eighty-nine, then how could they sign off on the treaty in seventeen eighty-seven? Well, because C.D. Muhammad turned around and said, "Look, in good faith, I'll accept the fact that you had a convention to draft the constitution in seventeen eighty-seven." C.D. Muhammad accepted their constitution in good faith, but he knew they still needed to fully ratify this constitution of the United States of America. It took the United States of America, thirteen colonies, two more years to finally get to a point where they could establish this constitution of the United States of America. But why did it take them two more years from seventeen eighty-seven to seventeen eighty-nine? It's because the thirteen colonies wasn't in full agreement of dissolving the Continental Congress. But C.D. Muhammad went on and accepted, in good faith, the constitution of the United States of America of seventeen eighty-nine. But yet, it was drafted in seventeen eighty-seven, so he accepted it in seventeen eighty-seven. He said, "You need to go ahead and get this fully ratified." Listen, what I have up here, this is the National Archive of the United States Federal Corporation, i.e. United States International Organization, okay? So right here, in George Washington's letter to C.D. Muhammad, December first, seventeen eighty-nine, it tells you the whole history in this letter, seventeen eighty-nine. Keep in mind that George Washington was fighting with the thirteen colonies from seventeen eighty-seven to seventeen eighty-nine to get them to dissolve the old constitution and enact a new constitution called the United States of America, okay? Now, listen. It's important for us to go, okay, from the top.
To C.D. Muhammad, New York, the first of December of seventeen eighty-nine. Since the date of the letter which the late Congress, by their president, addressed to your imperial majesty, the United States of America have not proper to change their government and to institute a new one. Agreeable by the constitution of which I have the honor of herewith enclosing a copy. The time necessarily employed in this arduous task and the derangement occasioned by so great, though peace, peaceful a revolution will apologize and account for your majesty not having received their regular advance advices and marks of attention from the United States, which the friendship and magni- magnanimity of your conduct towards them afforded reason to expect.
Okay, so look at this right here, Moors. George Washington enclosed a copy. He enclosed, he enclosed a copy of what? The Constitution. The Constitution, right? The Constitution of the United States of America. That's the new constitution. Okay, so therefore, their constitution, United States of America, did not come into full force and effect until seventeen eighty-nine because they had deposited with who? The sovereign. The sovereign of the empire of Morocco. Now let me pause right there for a second. So they, they deposited constitution, right? They deposited their constitution, they enclosed a copy, deposited with the sovereign so he could see. They recognized them as what? Americans, right? Listen to me, Moors. So when Ronald Reagan turns around and says, listen. When Ronald Reagan turns around and says, "Well, we, we had our declaration, we had a declaration, right, of independence. The independence of the United States of America was the two hundred and thirteen years ago." Well, if you do the math on two hundred and thirteen years from nineteen eighty-eight backwards, that says seventeen seventy-five, seventeen seventy-six, but that's not the truth. The United States of America's constitution was drafted in seventeen eighty-seven. Didn't come into full force and effect till seventeen eighty-nine. So listen. Since this is a new constitution, because they dissolved the Continental Congress Constitution, the Continental Conci- Constitution was their first Declaration of Independence, seventeen seventy-six. But as soon as they dissolved that constitution, guess what? Soon as they enacted a new constitution, that's a Declaration of Independence all over again. It's a brand-new country, a brand-new nation. It's a new name. So their Declaration of Independence is not seventeen seventy-six. Their Declaration of Independence is seventeen eighty-seven. The year they drafted the Constitution of the United States of America. They've had two declarations of independence. You gotta hear what I'm saying. You declare your independence, then you write a constitution. that recognizes you as a people. But if they went back and dissolved that constitution, it don't exist no more. They had to start all over again. With a brand new constitution that George Washington told C.D. Muhammad, I've enclosed a new constitution called the United States of America. And we drafted in seventeen eighty-seven, the same year we signed off to the treaty. So therefore, their Declaration of Independence as a new nation is actually seventeen eighty-seven and not seventeen seventy-six. They've had, they've started over twice. You gotta understand what I'm saying. So they have Declaration of Independence seventeen seventy-six and a brand new Declaration of Independence seventeen eighty-seven, the year they drafted this constitution. You gotta understand the common sense of what I'm saying.
Seven nine years?
Yeah. So from seventeen seventy-six to seventeen eighty-seven, that's eleven years. Eleven years, okay? You gotta understand what I'm saying. Why am I making this point? Why is this important? What's not important? But it's just history Moors should understand. That even the United States of America is not being honest with their own citizens to let them know that their real Declaration of Independence is really seventeen eighty-seven and not seventeen seventy-six. That's important to understand, okay? They need, they need to tell their Americans the truth. Now, wait a minute. What about the Constitution of the United States?
Right, they're not, it doesn't even.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. Eighteen seventy-one, okay. Here's the legislation of eighteen seventy-one. Forty-first Congress Session Three, Chapter Sixty-two. So you scroll down to chapter sixty-two, okay? Chapter sixty-two. Let's read the first paragraph, shall we?
Chapter sixty-two, an act to provide a government for the District of Columbia. Be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America and in Congress assembled, that all that part of the territory of the United States included within the limits of the District of Columbia be and the same is hereby created into a government by the name of the District of Columbia, by which name it is hereby constituted a body corporate for municipal purposes and may contract and be contracted with, sue and be sued, plead and be impeded, have a seal, and exercise all other powers of a municipal corporation not inconsistent with the constitution and laws of the United States and the provisions of this act.
Okay. So chapter sixty-two says, be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America in Congress assembled, so they were assembled in eighteen seventy-one. Then it said, that all that part of the territory of the United States included within the limits of the District of Columbia be and the same is hereby created into a government by the name of the District of Columbia, by which name it is hereby constituted a body corporate for municipal purposes and may contract and be contracted with, sue and be sued, plead and be impeded, have a seal, and exercise all other powers of municipal corporation not inconsistent with the constitution and laws of the United States. Constitution of the United States they created in eighteen seventy-one. So as you can see, Moors, they've had three constitutions since seventeen eighty-one. So they got the Continental Congress of seventeen eighty-one. They got the United States of America of seventeen eighty-seven. And they got the Constitution of the United States eighteen seventy-one. Three constitutions, right? They just simply don't wanna tell their citizens that all their citizens have been placed underneath the United States as citizens. But let me ask the Moors a question and the Americans, let me ask the Americans a question. How can Americans, how can Americans be citizens of a federal corporation? You can't be a citizen of Amazon. You can't be citizens of Walmart. You can't be citizens of, of, of Radio Shack or Sears. They all out of business. Toyota, these are all corporations. You can't be a citizen of a corporation. But they moved all their citizens underneath a federal corporation and called them citizens. But they're actually what? Persons. When you look at the Fourteenth Amendment, the bankers have put all the Americans regardless of their crayon status as persons underneath the Fourteenth Amendment. They're not citizens. They're persons. And persons are considered human person or artificial person. And they've listed all their so-called citizens as persons, i.e. all the Americans under the federal corporations are nothing but LLCs. The United States has three hundred and thirty million LLCs, commonly known as citizens. And that's the truth, right? So why am I showing you this? It's because the United States continues to act as fraud, right? They keep talking about they are the United States of America, but yet that name exists in name only, cause there is no three branches of government, the United States of America. However, there is three branches of government, what? You, you see what they wrote? Look. There is three branches of government, what? The United States Constitution, not the United States of America. It's all fraud that they keep doing. They should be honest with their so-called citizens and tell them, look, the United States is a representative of the United States of America, like a power of attorney. But they don't wanna tell their citizens the truth, and this is why they don't like Moors. It's not that they don't have respect for Moors. They know the Moors are correct about the treaties. They know this. But the problem is the bankers, the judges, the legislators, and the executive branch of all of their so-called governments have sold out the Americans. They've all been turned into a duracell battery, every last one of them. On paper, right? And that's what, that's why the American government don't like Moors. They respect Moors. They just like the fact that Moors keep telling the truth. They know that we can prove it too, alright? Okay, as I start to close out, alright. So we went over the, we finished the reading, right? We finished the reading of this Declaration of Intervention regarding the United States of America on behalf of the United States. So they say right here, the United States of America wrote this Declaration of Intervention, and that's a lie. The United States wrote this Declaration of Intervention on behalf of the United States of America as a power of attorney on behalf of Ukraine. That's the way it should say it, right? Okay. So what the Moors should take away from this, now that we read all twenty-six pages, the Moors will start learning how to write what's called a Declaration of Intervention that gives us a legal nature to intervene in case a colonial charter is trying to injure one of our organic provincial Moroccan states. We're learn, we, we, we can take this blueprint and kinda copy paste, plug and play with it. Understand the format of how they wrote it, and that's how, that's how we introduce it to our counsel court. Always keep in mind, Moors, that all these documents that we write through our Moroccan states will end up at the International Court of Justice. Because we can invoke the International Court of Justice in the event that the colonists are supervening the impossibility performance of our counsel courts. The next step is the ICJ. So we hand over all these documents to the ICJ and say, look, look at the steps we took. We, we took the step of mediation, then arbitration, then we sought judicial settlement through the counsel court. We've done our job. Now it's on the United Nations and the General Assembly, the Security Council, and the ICJ to assist us, right? With any acts of genocide, any acts of aggression, crimes against humanity, war crimes, terrorist attacks, et cetera. Right? We take that problem to the UN, okay? So as I start to close out, let's take it to the board. Right now, we're in the Charter of the United Nations, Chapter Seven, Articles Thirty-nine through fifty-one. We'll start reading over that in the next class. What is Article, um, what is Chapter Seven about? It's about action with respect to, with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression, okay? I got a drop down box. What do we use as countermeasures against the United States belligerents? Okay, we use what? We use Moroccan treaties. We'll learn more about that. We use Moroccan legislation. We'll learn more about that. We utilize the Charter's provisions, right? The one hundred and eleven articles. We'll learn more about that. We're reading over that now. We utilize UN resolutions, right? All their contracts, such as the genocide contract. We use counsel general. The counsel general enforces all of your law like an attorney general, right? And then also as a countermeasure, we use the Wazir Regional Council to come together as irritable parties to write a Declaration of Intervention. And last but not least, we use the counsel court and the International Court of Justice as judicial, judicial settlement, alright, Moors? Alright, I end with that. Isma.